He did it deliberately.
Yeah.
Oh, of course. It goes without saying. Who are you paying me this for? We're good at that.
Why do you go to be difficult?
Okay, I can't believe it. You can't believe that one. Oh, he doesn't do it. Yeah. Next year. Next year, she'll do that. Your first class salary.
Gonna go fast.
Oh, well, yeah. What's that? Fourteen thousand. That's what I need.
No. Because right now, we're going.
We have another role to play.
Yeah.
So, then, we can send them out. She didn't know. We see your statement. And you were silent. You didn't put it here and do it. Do it that way.
I call a regular meeting for the North Huntington Township Board of Commissioners. Co-ends the October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P. M. The Board will call me in a minute.
Mr. Harold, here. Mr. Higginson, here. Mr. Bertani, here. Commissioner Gray, here. Mr. Vicenda, here. Mr. Kessera, here. And Mr. Martino, here.
Everybody please rise to the place of leave. May your name be taken for the confirmation. And in open court, I have the brute duty from the United States of America to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, an official proclamation from the Township Board of Commissioners is declaring the number seventeen World Pancreatic Cancer Day in North Huntington Township. Whereas in twenty sixteen, an estimated fifty-three thousand and seventy people in the United States would be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty people died from that disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to be the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States and is projected to become the second by twenty twenty. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just eight percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage. Seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. Whereas approximately twenty-two thousand and ninety deaths will occur in those who die in twenty sixteen. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. Whereas there will be an estimated four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-one new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in twenty twenty. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of North Huntington enhances a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners designating the number seventeen as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in North Huntington Township. That proclamation is by the Board of Commissioners.
Lord, we reduce that pancreatic cancer in Jesus' name. O'er-God Almighty, Creator of the heavens and the earth, the often sustainer of life, the giver of immortal gladness, pray that you pour out your spirit upon our Board of Commissioners, upon the administration, support staff, police, first responders, and the citizens of North Huntington in this area. Bless our country, Lord. Bless this government and its citizens with wisdom, a mind for detail, discernment, peace, and fill us all with love for one another. Make us family, Lord, whether we know each other or not. Guide us and direct us so that justice will prevail and so that we may be one in this family. For your honoring will read praise in Jesus' name.
Amen. Many citizens would like to speak tonight to decide a book and fill you. Remember, the meeting is being recorded and also video streamed. For a citizen that I speak is Mark Hamilton. Do you state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Mark Hamilton. I'm with the department address one-one-two-seven-nine Center Highway, North Huntington Township, one-five-six-four-two. Hey, my name is Mark Hamilton. I'm a lifelong resident of this township. I was hired by the Police Department in two thousand nine. I've worked here ever since, while currently still serving in the one-seventy-first Pennsylvania Act, Lord, one-seventy-first. As many of you know, Republic, although we've had our issues, our military members with the township. With that being said, once they were made public, many members of the public came and supported us. They openly came. They blindly supported us, in fact. Because they didn't know the truth. They didn't know what was really occurring. But they still came out for us. With that being said, we thank you. And we stayed quiet. We stayed, tried to do the right thing, go through the process. You know, I'm here representing myself and Justin Warden and Jay Katrin. I was going to speak with them while they're currently serving overseas. And they gave me permission to come up here and speak on their behalf to defend ourselves against comments that were made last month by Commissioner Gray. Now, for the public, I want you guys to understand. And I will address you. I'm going to continue to address you. Because it is important that you know that many members of this board or a couple members of the board have led you to believe that our complaints have been solely monetary in nature, solely about money. When that couldn't be further from the truth. Yes, there are disputes about township failing to follow its own policy. But we've also notified them of many acts of discrimination. In fact, we went above and beyond showing the documentation, the emails, the meeting meds. We've done everything in our power to show the documentation. Again, for the public, I'm going to start off with every comment that Commissioner Gray made with the time he said it. So you yourselves can go back, read, or in his own video, go back and please listen to what was said and to listen to the facts that I presented to you today. On September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, these are the inaccurate, misleading statements made by Mr. Gray. At fifty-eight minutes and thirty-eight seconds into the video, Mr. Gray, you state the members did not use their chain of command. At exactly one hour, you say it is the township manager's position and responsibility to handle these issues. At one hour and thirty-six minutes, you said they never put anything right. They never went to their union. They had not given a single thing for us to address. Give us specific examples of discrimination. We have not received a single item to address. Seconds later, you say the military members went around their boss, went around the chief, went around John Shepherd, the township manager, and right to the Board of Commissioners. And I'll quote you by saying, you said we were trying to heal ourselves as good as you. Well, here's why many rebuttals and facts, that's what actually occurred. We have the documentation of that. We have the emails. We have the meeting dates. We have everything. But first, let's start off with a couple of keynotes that the public has to be aware of. At one point, you said, why haven't they filed agreements? Mr. Gray, here's a copy of our collective bargaining agreement. In this collective bargaining agreement, it also references the township SOP and the police SOP, which is standard operating procedures. Nothing in any of those documents that I just referenced have military discrimination in it. Nothing. There is a discrimination section in our contract, but it absolutely does not cover discrimination from military service. It doesn't. I mean, if anyone would like to see it, I'd be more than happy to reveal it after. Our SOP does not cover. The township SOP does not cover. So when you tell the public, you mislead the public and say, well, you haven't filed agreements. It's an unagreable item, sir. You can't file agreements off of these documents. Mr. Kessera, you were a police officer for how many years? Am I correctly saying? If it's not this book, you can't read it. You don't have to answer. Then people always say, why did they go to their union? Mr. Gray, we did go to the union. When Chief Lusacki was hired years ago, and these issues started with blatant documented discrimination against military members, we went to members of our union. We went to our union leadership. We went through senior members in our union. Someone who's here. You know some of the comments? Well, I'll tell you the main comment and subject maybe because it still breaks a whole my heart today. Do you want to be a police officer? Or do you want to play hero on the weekend? Mr. Kessera, you were there when some of these comments were made. I'm not saying you may. I'm not accusing you. But you were there. You were part of our union. And very, very hard to hear some of these comments made. Are you going to go play army on the weekend? I gotta pick up this one because you guys are gone. So, Mr. Gray, I asked him the question. I plead to not spawn. What type of support did you expect? And we're not required to give them. Because this is an unagreable issue. Because it's not in our books. I understand that. This is just as much for them as it is for you, Joe.
They could be able to hear it if the mic left off.
Well, I'm sure they can hear it without a mic. So, hit back on track. We have to do that. What we needed to do, because it's an unagreable matter, is use our chain of command. I'm approaching my sixteenth year of military service. I'm well-personed in chain of command. Justin Warden, twenty-three years of service. Jay Katrin, approaching twenty years of service. We are well-aware of how to operate chain of command. And in fact, I'm going to prove it to you right now. Again, you said when you don't use our chain of command, we get our first attempt to notify the township of this discrimination was on December twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. Myself and Officer Warden burned the township manager John Shepherd's office. We were there to file agreements for a different matter, which is a personnel issue I want to go and report with. During that meeting, we told you, Mr. Shepherd, of the discrimination that we felt was going on. During that meeting, I looked at you in the face as we were looking at each other now. And I said, Mr. Shepherd, you're in a chain of command, whether you like it or not. You have a duty to act when we come to you with these issues. And I remember very good that you shaking your head and acknowledging, yes. We waited a little bit. We waited to find out when the investigation was going to be done, when matters were going to be taken to protect us as employees. Nothing happened. In early January of two thousand sixteen, we filed a complaint with the employer's support of the Guard Reserve, ESGR. And the way that works, I'll explain a little bit more for the Commissioners in the future to be a part of it and for the public. The way that works is we are each assigned an embattlement. An embattlement's sole purpose is to be a mediator between township and its employee. They are not to be biased. They are to say, employee, you're wrong. This is what they have to do, and that's it. Township, you're wrong. You have to do this. They are absolutely neutral. When my personal embattlement, each military member, all three of us, who filed complaints, were assigned an embattlement, separate cases. My embattlement, and I still have all the emails, told me I contacted Mr. Shepherd, as yet to establish my contact. And through my chain of command, Mr. Shepherd said. Now, in case anyone is not familiar with the chain of command, if I have an issue with the chief of police or an issue that I don't feel is going to be resolved, and chain of command, through my sixteen years of service, I know for a fact it is absolute standard. You are entitled to go one step above that person. Does that make sense? I believe it does. I am a sergeant in the military. If I have a problem, someone's got to go to one rank above me if they have a problem with me. That's what a chain of command is. And that's exactly what it did. We went from one step above the chief of police to running the township manager, John Shepherd. The embattlement reached out to Mr. Shepherd because I should have told him to do it on chain of command. The embattlement then got back to me and said, well, Mr. Shepherd, we played the telephone tag. Mr. Shepherd said he wants to speak with me. He will speak with the township attorney. The embattlement said, we don't do that. This is, we're the lowest level. We don't do that yet. We don't, attorney talk returns. We don't do that. So then he said, I'm going to try again. So, Mr. Shepherd, he said, you try again. And again, he was referred to the township attorney. They did reach out to the township attorney. Mr. Shepherd said, I don't know if it was you. I don't know who it was. I believe it was Mr. Nice. And Mr. Nice wrote our embattlement back and said, give us in writing. We're not going to speak to you until it's in writing. The embattlement again said, this is the lowest level. We do not do that. We don't give it in writing because that is not my job with the embattlement. So then, I asked my embattlement, have you ever had a scenario like this? Have you ever had a government agency give you issues like this? This is a quote from his testimony. Never, ever have I had this amount of difficulty with a case before. The next time we record it, it was January eleventh, two thousand sixteen. And the reason we recorded again that soon was because, if you recall, the agreements, the only agreements in North Huntington Township were the one. But first, we should say, you know, to be kicked back, we had to refile. When we refiled that, we reiterated, re-rated again to you, Mr. Shepherd. We feel we're being discriminated against. And I again said to you, you have a duty to act when we come to you as our supervisor. We have a duty to investigate, a duty to look into this. And again, you're wrong, sir. In fact, at that point, we were losing so much faith in the system. And I'm sure, Mr. Shepherd, you recall this. We asked for an outside investigation. Because to be honest, this township has a history of going outside for investigations. So we said, why not us? Why not this? So we asked for an outside investigation. Nothing happened. There wasn't even an internal investigation. Nothing was there. So our embattlement eventually got a meeting set up with Mr. Martino and Mr. Shepherd. On January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, that was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. In that meeting, we explained every scenario with documentation in detail, every act of discrimination by Chief Lusacki and now other members of this township. In that meeting, Mr. Martino, I'm sure you recall. I said something that triggered a very adamant response from you. And I said, you know, I fear further retaliation by the chief, by Mr. Shepherd. I fear further retaliation because at this point, we have notified through our chain of command and nothing's been investigated. Nothing even has been looked at. And we beat that one. August fifth, two thousand sixteen. A member, unfortunately, he's not here. I was really helping him shell tonight. A supervisor, before I attended drill weekend, unlocked me into the specific. He actively and blatantly discriminated against me to the extent other members of the police department texted me and said, I can't believe you did that. And I'm going to go out over here because this needs to be said. Just today, ten minutes before I came here, I found out that same supervisor just actively discriminated against other military member group who turned from drill weekend. This was a fresh shit fact. Now, I told you today, my chain of command, to make sure I was well-informed prior to this meeting. And I asked, are the current investigations into the supervisor's actions against me? This is before I was on the battlefield. The next military. And my chain of command said, no. There's no active investigation. There's nothing. At this point, in my talk, I met December twenty-second, early January with the embattlement, January eleventh and January nineteenth meeting. We met with township manager expressed in detail. So if that isn't my chain of command, I'm on my fourth official. If that isn't my chain of command at this point, I don't know what is. Please show me a document that says otherwise. In March of two thousand sixteen, we still have yet to hear of anything responsible to township other than House Bill eighty-eight was corrected and some other issues that were corrected. But nothing, no discrimination issues were even mentioned again after our meetings. Not investigated. Nothing. So at that point, we realized Mr. Shepherd was not going to act. Was not going to investigate. So, Mr. Martino, we emailed you, the president of the board, and we requested a meeting with all seven officials. Not just the three. All seven. The email proves we asked a meeting. Now, I'm saying that clearly, Mr. Gray, because last month, you refused us on talking to certain officials. You personally, Mr. Higginson, Mr. Kessera, were all asked to attend. And the rebuttal we got from Mr. Martino was that you refused to show up. You would not show up. So then we were asked for an agenda. We're going to have this meeting because this is where I run forward. We're trying to set this meeting up. Then we were asked for an agenda. On that agenda, red. Military discrimination, disparity of discipline, us military members getting disciplined for other members. We weren't. Yes, we put on the peg issues. But that agenda clearly stated that this was beyond peg. And, Mr. Gray, you let the public believe that this is all about mine. Like, I don't know how much more we could have, more information we could have given you that this was about blatant documented discrimination. So the day before the meeting, Mr. Martino says, Neil, saying the meeting was canceled for lack of interest. Mr. Martino, I'm sure you remember that. Now, I understand that some members had to go away. I believe Mr. Kessera said he had prior plans, prior schedule, and Mr. Harold. If I remember correctly, he said we had to be away. But then I did ask. Were we going to reset? Or better yet, tell me who refuses to show up. Mr. Martino responded. Mr. Gray. Mr. Higginson. Now, I'm going to be blunt. How about being disrespectful? But I find it baffling that you openly and openly complained at her. We haven't done it. We haven't, I don't know about this. But we invited you. We asked you. We asked you, just come here ourselves. So now, at this point, in March, we have exhausted our chain of command. Not only have we gone step by step perfectly, we've exhausted it. So you played with amusement, but the exact opposite happened. We went through every step. In fact, we went to extremes at every step. Then we had a meeting on August twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. The problem would have occurred as some other veterans come in and said, I want you to meet. And again, it was made about one. Although this is not, this is far from about one. So that veteran come in and said, I want you to meet. And then finally, we go to meet. No, excuse me, we go to meet with us. It's a shame that it had to go to extremes for that to happen, but it did happen. So on August twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, my attorney and I met with Mr. Alexander. You were there. Mr. Martino. Mr. Bertani. At that time, I spoke for two hours and fifteen minutes. And unfortunately, the other military members aren't here. They're overseas. Their wives are here to support me because guess what? We've been led through this. We don't know what else to do. So today, I have them. On August twenty-ninth, I said we met toward that trip out, two hours, fifteen minutes I spoke. And again, we documented every case of discrimination. Every single time we went to this town. Every date I've mentioned to you today, we gave to Mr. Alexander, your township attorney. And the other gentleman over there. We had last month's meeting. While I'm deployed, I'm not even here to defend myself. All overseas, I returned, I watched the video of you saying that we didn't. Mr. Gray, you said we didn't do a chain of command. You said we didn't go to our union. That's so false. That is absolutely false. And you had every opportunity to view that. And you had every opportunity to review the documentation I did. I'm a big guy. I can take it. I got broad shoulders. My wife and my other two service members wise, who are running through this for us, it's really important. I want to restate what Mr. Gray told the public. Again, you're not using chain of command. But the township manager's position is responsible to handle these issues. Put something in writing, go to your union, file the agreements. We have not been given a single thing to address. Give us specific examples of discrimination, we have not received a single one. We want to round our boss, we want to round our chief, we want to round the township manager and write for the board's issues. I think it's safe to say that's not how it happened. Mr. Gray, you also made some other comments. From public on record to town. One hour, 37 minutes and 17 seconds. If there was discrimination, we should be sued. One hour, 37 minutes and 21 seconds. I will stand behind the lawsuit if we discriminate. One hour, 37 minutes and 25 seconds. As far as I know, nobody in this board is aware of any discrimination because we have never been presented with anything that said, "Hey, you did this." I don't think I need to elaborate. Mr. DeSerra. One hour and 3 minutes. Unless someone can show me improper things have been done in that, I have not seen them. I have not been made aware of them. I don't know about them. At the North Highland Golf Club, we know that my wife's sitting in the car next to me. You pulled up and you worked there. I asked you to direct it, or you come to the office on that meeting. You said, "I don't." We spoke briefly, and then you just don't worry asking, "What discrimination are you guys talking about?" Because you kept, again, the common phrase that was used was, "I was under the impression you guys were made for it." And I said, "What about discrimination?" And we said, "Well, what discrimination?" And with my wife seated in the car next to me, we spoke for probably an hour, 15 minutes. About, and I gave you detail, the best I could off this from my mind, descriptions on discrimination, how ridiculous your chain of command is. It fails. We get months later, you seem publicly to be made aware. Gentlemen, we've been at war since 2003. Myself and other members that are police officers, can also go there. We're not going to stray away from it. We're not going to knock out because of issues back home. Where we continue to do what we do, and we do it well. But there's something that you guys need to understand. With there being a war this long, and we're going to hire our police officers, likely there's certain of you that are... The likelihood is, they might still be in, they might be in a war reserve. So if us three members don't stand up against this discrimination and lack of acting wants to notify, how long will this continue within the township? How long will my family, my wife, my post service members, families be asked in public, "Why didn't you pay double?" Because the discrimination just shut them over. So gentlemen, I had to come here today to speak. It ends. Mr. Gray? Thanks to you, I get to watch the meeting. I do appreciate that. But also know this, your false comments have followed every month for most good for myself and our military fans. Thank you for your time.
Our next citizen is Jason Fayers.
Goodbye.
Take your name and address directly, please.
Jason Fayers, 790 Bronston Road, 405647. Did you guys know about here last week about the commercial aid awards? I'm just here to follow up and see if you gave me all where it goes from here. What did the order of operations went after?
Thank you. Next citizen, Brian Bevlin. Take your name and address directly.
I'm out of 640, it's time for a 5. Tonight I come to this meeting with a disappointment beyond words. While I was away last month, I've earned even as far away as Colorado. This board had dismissed Chief Lasekki. Specifically, it was the board members that I will from here on refer to as the Gang of Four, because that is how they are behaving, like a gang of thugs. The North Highland community is appalled that you fired the chief, even though some of the community knew of your specific intentions before the last election. They had no idea that the Gang of Four was stooped to the level that you have. The Gang of Four are Mr. Martino, Mr. Harold, Mr. Cessenda, and Mr. Martino. You were not hired by the community to put forth your own personal agendas or agendas. You were elected to oversee the efficient and effective work of the township. Before your election, you had a hit list. And according to plan, you're on your way to fulfilling that list. Shame on you. You're acting like junior high boys. This time, put on your big boys pants, and get to work for the people of the community. It's not for you. As a board goes on against police and police officers in our country, you, the Gang of Four, are waging your own war against the police department of North Highland County. Shame on you. This local government has become corrupt, and you are unreasonable. Don't you understand this is not about you? This is not about getting your friends jobs. Corruption comes in two forms. Money, for financial corruption, when goods, services, or money is taken from the people. Or moral corruption, when the people that deserve the citizens serve themselves and their agenda instead. That's where we are now. We have corrupt commissioners. When you have corruption, you cannot have good veterans. Did you ever hear of the Peter Pan principle? Very much so, yeah? That's why little boys never grow up. It's time to grow up. And while I'm standing here, I'd like the community to know and check out for themselves that Mr. Cessenda failed to file a financial report after the election. This is a person who the community has entrusted to oversee its finances. But Mr. Cessenda failed to file his report until the election bureau contacted him. At that point, his financial report was overdue, and he was fined $460. I'm sure he will find ignorance, however, on your mistake, as everyone running for office, is sent a reminder to file a financial report. This is public record, so anyone who wants to ask the election bureau for a financial report can do so. One last comment. Get your heads all straight and quit the agenda you have put forward. The community deserves better. Thank you.
Next citizen is Eric Cass.
I just wanted to be said that the veterans of foreign wars...
Name and address directly, please.
Excellent. Eric Goss, Horace B. Drive, North Highland County, Pennsylvania, longtime resident, graduate in lower high school, combat veteran in Iraq. Supporters of my brothers, Mark Hamilton. Here to make sure that his voice is heard. Here to make sure that toxic leadership like Chief Lasekki is not accepted, nor acceptable, nor labeled as a band of four. We're watching you guys, and I'm going to type and continue to watch you. And there will be no more discrimination against the military. We won't stand for it. Veterans of foreign wars and the national champion will not stand for it. And I support the firing of Chief Lasekki. Thank you.
Citizen Bob Burnet.
I'm from 1213, the center of Detroit. Been a resident, long time, a mission for a lot of years. Don't keep it touch as much as I used to. I see a lot of things going on here the last three to six months, but it's pretty bad, guys. I mean, you look bad. Thanks for the stream. I did like... Do you know what? You let yourself bad. Talk about branding the township. This isn't branding. Why? Let's talk about the chief. Why can't it get under my skin more than anything? You must have the share. Do not fire someone without documentation to prove that you have. And you may have, but I don't doubt it. 12 years ago, we pushed Chief Agnew. Two of you are still sitting on his board, because we're there. Taxpayers, 250 grand, you're right. Plus, like my benefactor, his wife and himself, I don't know, 322. We spent another 50 grand to go look for Chief Lieutenant Doctor, right down the street. They find a right hand, whatever, like that, like so. And we spent another 50, 60, how do you know the numbers, guys? You gotta tell me. To go find him, I said. Then I hear the last one, "You guys fire." Then again, gangs, I hear the gangs and all this stuff. That's that. You gotta work together. You're leaders. If you don't work together as a team, this place is going to fail. Because if you're all over DC, it doesn't work unless you work together. What am I going to have, a million dollar chief here? This guy ain't going to go away quiet. I watched him two months ago, 3 months, 70%. Mark, you've been a nice job for that. I'm telling you, he's very good. Be prepared, taxpayers, you're going to pay some money here. You're going to pay some money. Track us this month. So that's all I have to say. Get it together, you guys gotta start working. 4, 3, 4, don't tap. You gotta work together. To succeed, we're working as a team.
Ida Langer?
No, that's not him.
You tracked up? Sorry. That's it for citizens input. Commissioner Gimble, or Daniel.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Hamilton for his service. Second of all, I would like to commend his research in what the things he brought up today. Third, I would like to say, as far as my comments, I believe he quoted me exactly accurate. Fourth, I would like to say, if you think for one second that I was making what I believe are false comments, do you think I would document it with a video stream that's available to everybody? I stand by every comment I made, because that's the truth, as at least I and I believe some other board members know it. When you say that this was all about money, or I bring it up, all about money, that's the issue that came to us. And if you review, we weren't videotaping at the time, but I know if you go back through previous meetings and review the audio tapes that we have, you'd find that the only issue we ever discussed in public were, basically, as far as I know, for the most part of anything, was financial. And I know I called upon the manager, and I know I called upon the solicitor to say, "Are we following the law? Are we following the law?" And I was assured that we are, as far as finances go. Now, as far as the discrimination complaints that you allege... As far as the discrimination come out issues, I am still not aware until time when you bring some of them up. We were never presented as a board with anything. And when you had requested this meeting on August 29th, or I think it was before that, and then it was finally scheduled for August 29th, we asked Commissioner Martino to give us an agenda, like you said. I don't believe we ever got one. We had asked them...
Okay, all right. And it was military disparity or something like that?
Very much. It was generic topics. We, yes.
You're right. I think we did get that.
But it was very generic. It wasn't specific as to specific allegations. And as far as I know, and I can't speak for everybody else, but as far as I know, we were told that you could go to the union, you could go to any, you have multiple layers of appeal, basically. And to our knowledge, or at least to my knowledge, and I know your father came here last month and accused me of not, I forget how he said it, but basically not knowing what was going on. He's right. Because that information did not make it to me, or to at least some of us. And I can assure you that if it did, we would have acted on it, or at least I would have. So that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Martino, may I refer?
Go ahead. Normal readout, put that in.
It's been done in the past. I watched it on video.
I know. That's a normal.
A lot of communication amongst this area. With all due respect, sir, it's not my problem. When I follow my chain of command and I do what I need to do by the book, I can't control your email. I can't control that Mr. Martino sent or not. But what you can control, Mr. Gray, is, well, clearly there's a problem, so maybe I should just let it be. Maybe I should listen. You are my vision. I live in your area. You should say, "Well, that's not only an employee, one resident lives in my area." I'm going to listen. I'm going to give them that.
I'm sure I did, if you research, you'll find the quotes that I've said many times, that it is not helpful to the organization for us to meet with specific groups, no matter who they are, in any collective bargaining unit.
Sir, it's a chain of command. We were followed. I understand your opinion, Paul. It may not be useful. But when that group has exhausted all options other than to sue the township, we exhausted the chain. And I understand you must have my comments, I, let's be honest, you have to. But you did say we can be the chain. You did say we can go to work. You did say these things. And I completely rebut them with documentation to prove that will be available eventually in litigation after your repose. Let's be honest. Because that's what this is for. Mr. Shepherd failed to act on five different meetings, four different meetings. What other options we have, sir? We came to you. We did. We exhausted every option. So please tell me, as I was thinking, if we had more options, please tell me. We didn't want to accomplish this. You think it was easy for me to come up here and tell Mr. Shepherd, the second in command of the township, that you didn't do it? I didn't. No, it doesn't feel good. I'm scared, I fear future retaliation because people's in my head. So, Mr. Gray, please tell me what you should have done there. I can't at this point. And if you're not informed, make yourself aware. You have your right. You could have came to the meetings we invited you to. No, she did.
I explained why.
Yeah. But maybe you should have been more informed, change it. Because then you could have came, and this would have happened. Any further questions? Any further questions, comments? Commissioner Grant, do you want to add anything else?
I have a few comments to add. I mean, I appreciate you coming up, Mark, and thank you for your service. You know, originally, when all these came up, like you said, we were trying to set up a meeting in January, I think it was the 19th, and at that time, I said I wasn't comfortable coming, and that's, just like we said, we knew our third chain of command, and from my understanding, I was not aware, they went to manager Shepherd, and nothing was done.
With all due respect, that's not my doing.
No, I'm just stating the facts, I'm not aware of that, I wasn't aware of that, that's the first I heard about that tonight. But as far as the agenda goes, like we said, we didn't get that into the agenda, that was a bullet point item, that would have brought, liked my attention of what was going on, I was unaware of that, and I've been saying that's your responsibility, but as far as the agenda, I would have been here to hear, but like I said, typically, we don't meet with employees who work through their department directors, or manager, or solicitor. And at that same time, when we talked about the following meeting, what was it, a few months ago?
August 29th.
Yeah, thank you, August 29th. At that meeting, we decided, at the public meeting, that Commissioner Martino, or the solicitor, and John Shepherd would be the only ones at the meeting. The other commissioners, I guess, were invited by Commissioner Martino, that we were brought aware of after the fact. We did not decide that at the meeting, it was supposed to be just war president, solicitor, and township manager.
Okay, now, out of my control.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that, I'm just stating the facts of where I'm coming from, and that's all. And then, we were told we were gonna get a notes, or a brief summary of what happened at the meeting, any type of grievances. It went live for two weeks until I requested it from the township manager, and from the solicitor's department, we didn't get it, probably for at least a month, of what actually transpired at that meeting. So, that's where I stand, and like I said, I'm unaware of a lot of the facts that were brought up tonight, so, yeah, we'll be here and we'll look into it.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, Mark, I'm not gonna reiterate on what they already said now. A couple things that you said, I don't recall any conversations with the chief saying that to you, as far as me being involved, but I've been out of there for two and a half years, but I got a pretty good memory when it comes to that. Yes, we did have a conversation after the call. And I did tell you that I was gonna be at the meeting for the reasons that the board had said that Tony Martino was gonna be with you, rather than cloud everything up and then bring everything back to us. After that, I have talked to some officers in the department, and I feel that you do have some valid points to a couple things. I had the thought, Tony Martino, our president, after a meeting, would have brought something back to us, and then would have added the agenda, of course, things have been a little crazy. And I thank you for coming tonight. I think this was overdue, I think you should have done it before, like Officer Young said, that it's a shame that it's come to this. But hopefully, it'll come to a head now, and we'll be able to look into it.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Hamilton, will you come up?
President, go ahead. Go ahead. Commissioner Hamilton, chain of command, Justin Wardman, which C. is in service, is he a rank in the officer?
He's a first sergeant, United States Army.
So, he knows the chain of command, correct?
Yes, sir.
Jay Catford, is he a rank in the officer?
He's a 7th, United States Army.
He knows the chain of command?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they know how to go through a process, or whatever they're...
I can't speak how long he's served, so I know it's a little bit more strict in the air, so I'm gonna assume that he understands the chain of command.
Okay, and another question. I believe Mr. Wardman had a medical drug test.
Sir, that's the first and all, with all due respect, I'm not gonna answer any questions.
That's fine.
With all due respect for his family, I don't feel that it's perfect for me to answer, or have you done something to return?
And one thing I will say, I will testify on behalf of the military people with their dose of work, because I know what's been going on down there, and I know everything that's happening. My son-in-law just left for a week today with a two-year-old and a one-year-old, and I have a boy that cries every night for that. I thank you guys for what you do, my thoughts and prayers, and I'm behind you 100%. And one other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Gray says that all through the military, that he voted against putting a monument up on Call of Duty Park.
Yeah. Sir, you can break it outside around the block and see what.
He's always good to bring out about me in the knowing, so I figure I can handle it. Jason Trager?
I can handle that more, but like, we did speak last week, Mr. Trager was here, I thought he was still here when we went through what was gonna happen, possibly he wasn't, but the board wanted the staff to take a look at, maybe looking at the regulations we have concerning commercial vehicles, residential districts, the regulations on those. And if you recall, I mentioned that any zoning change that's proposed would need to be first reviewed by the township's planning commission, because they're the recommend quality, so the goal of staff would be to put something together, look at some pros and cons, take it to the planning commission, they can ultimately bring something back to you, a recommendation, regardless of what that recommendation is. Andy and I spoke about this on Tuesday, actually, the entire staff, our staff, maybe on Tuesday, we spent some time talking about this issue, so that's the procedure that'll take place unless you want to do something different, but that's what we talked about at last week's meeting.
Assistant, I believe it was Fran Ben, if they have comments? Mr. Burner? Eric Goss? Goss, anybody have comments, Eric? Okay, how about Bob Burner now?
I would just like to say, and I appreciate all of you here, when I was here, and I'm a part of the management committee, I was a volunteer, I've been there for many years, thank you. The searches from a cost standpoint weren't that expensive, so I do wanna apologize, there were some searches done, the last search that was done was pretty inexpensive, because the board utilized the services of Bill Gamble, it was relatively inexpensive. That's not to say there still wasn't a cost, but it wasn't that much money, maybe a few thousand dollars, it was pretty expensive, but I just wanted to set the record so much straight on that, on that side.
Okay, just continue on with the agenda. Approval of Minister's special meeting on September 15, 2016?
Question approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, seven, zero. For regular meeting on September 21, 2016?
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote. Aye, seven, zero. Evan Bill?
Make the motion, favor number 72962, favor number 78050.
Second.
Go ahead. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote. Aye, seven, zero. Staff reports, anybody have any, anything for the legislature or hold? We're not really getting any. Rich, is that a, not a solved, don't wrap that up?
It is, yes, it's fully completed.
We didn't solve it before, or started filling it up, or is it just...
We are, in fact, we're delivering today, unsolved, I have it on order, so we'll bring it in, they started today, so they'll continue to bring it in as ordered. One thing I will add to my report is, obviously, with the upcoming season, we'll get, doing all our preparation work as far as starting to spread it on fronts, that we're not using currently, you know, we have salt, we're starting to get our salt supplies stocked out, and while, you know, doing all the mapping, and doing all of our maps, and taking sure everything's up to date, so we're ready to go for the upcoming season. Hopefully, we'll have a winter like we did last year.
Rich, can you start making salt for any of that?
We haven't started making, we have some out there, it's still in the container, we haven't started making, and it's just a matter of, you know, ours, I mean, if you have something.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you.
And you, Rick, have anything, and you?
I have nothing else to add, man.
Art Recreations Report, anybody have any, Mr. Dan Miller?
Just, I got to do a, a technical, well, briefly, then fishing derby is best, was beginning of the month. Pretty good turnout, you know, it was a wet day, very nice event, first time I had a chance to, I saw a lot of your folks out there, Dan, I understand you were part of the fish spot that day, so, kids had a good day, you know, it was a little dreary.
Thanks, Commissioner, I'll express that for us, Dan, as well, thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to express the same thing. I was there, one part of the morning, and you guys did a great job, and of course, you have, I'm gonna write it off, so, you wanna tell us a little bit about that?
Well, again, thank you, and I'll express your thanks to our staff for the fishing derby. The event that we have coming up, I'm sure Andrew Shepherd will make reference to it in the meeting announcements, but this Saturday, we'll have our Haunted Halloween Trail, which is a youth program, trigger tube program, if you will, for the young children. What we have done this year is something new that we haven't done in the past, and we're trying to appease the older audience, the tweens, or teens of the community, if you will, like to come out a little bit later, and we've expanded our haunted Halloween trail, and have extended it to a scare trail. So, it's a little bit longer, a little bit more frightful for maybe those that are adventurous, this will be our first year, hopefully, it will prove to be a worthwhile adventure.
I'll see you there.
Anything on Dan?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lucy Port, anybody have any questions, Lucy Port? And Nancy isn't here tonight. Marissa Mantry, Port, anyone? Okay, next one, planning and engineering, for fire visual report, any questions on the fire? Subdivision and land development application, for Mr. Wayne.
There are quite a few resolutions to complete tonight for subdivisions. First one concerns subdivision 13 of 2006, and our one town square, the Indian Number One Plan, that is recommended for approval.
Question approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Second item is subdivision 14 of 2016, the LPP subdivision plan, that is recommended for approval.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Next one is subdivision 15 of 2016, the Kosh subdivision, excuse me, consolidation plan to combine two parcels, that's recommended for approval.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Next one is subdivision 16 of 2016, the Michaels, his daily plan number five, that is recommended for approval.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Next item is subdivision 17 of 2016, the Navy Plan Number Two, that is recommended for approval with one condition, that being sewage planning approval from DEP.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Next item is subdivision 18 of 2016, the Guest subdivision plan, that is recommended for approval.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Next item is subdivision 21 of 2016, the Itker Plan Number One, that is recommended for approval with the condition of sewage planning approval from DEP from the farm lot subdivision.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Finally, subdivision 22 of 2016, the St. George Dakers Detention Bond Plan, which is recommended for approval.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero. That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Any other solicitor report, Mr. Ralph, today?
Thank you, Mr. President, there is one action item on the solicitor's report this evening, it is action to adopt proposed ordinance number five of 2016, approving revisions of the civil service rules and regulations.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven. Roll call.
Commissioner Harold?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bertini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Casera?
No.
And Commissioner Martino?
Yes.
Question carried, sixth one.
For that concludes this solicitor's report for this time. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next one, township manager report, Mr. Trager.
Thank you, first item is action to approve the September check register.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Item two is the budget report for September, is there any questions concerning that? Item three, item number three is action to accept the resignation of Todd Frye from the North Huntington Township District Board, in accordance with his correspondence of September 11, 2016.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Item four is action to approve a resolution to authorize an overhead manner for the Mormon High School Theater Company on Route 30 near Moll Lane.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Item five is action to direct the Civil Service Commission to prepare an eligibility list for entry level police officer.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Item six is action to settle the deeds litigation in amount of $301,000.
Question approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye.
Commissioner Harold?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
No.
Commissioner Bertini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Casera?
No.
And Commissioner Martino?
Yes.
Pass to five to two. Last item I have to adjutant, I think the board wants to discuss is just about the opening of a police chief position, we have an opportunity to, you know, move forward and think about, you know, how you want to move forward for the future, recruitment wise, internal, external, things of that nature, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what I'm speaking of. I'm not sure if the board is ready to talk about that tonight, if you are, it's on my agenda, if you're not, it can be put forward to a future meeting. So, that's open for discussion by the board, if you're ready to talk about it or not.
I'll make a motion to retable this for later date.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, aye, seven, zero.
Thank you.
And further board comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank John and Simeon Kissel for coming directly, since I'm gonna have cancer today, so, thank you, John, that's a lot of you.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I do have one, I should have brought it up under the action to settle the deeds litigation, but, hey, I just, that's okay, it's my fault. I just wanna comment, some people may be surprised that I supported the settlement, but this is a case that's been going on for a long time, John?
Ten years, or eight years.
A long time.
Long time.
And I was firmly in favor of going for the full cost of the system, which I think we paid about $600,000 for the system.
Fair enough. The HPA system.
Yeah.
Pretty people on that.
Yeah. For the HPA system that we have installed in the townhouse, it's been a problem since we had it installed, you may notice some humidity in the air. We had people in the tax office, and, you know, I mean, there was water dripping here and there, there were envelopes that were self-sealing, just because of the moisture in the air. This, I don't like the $301,000... I don't like the $301,000 settlement, but to be honest with you, sometimes I think the system's designed, and I, I don't know if it's the legal system, the. The system fails. And I think the system tries to fatigue you into a settlement without going to court, so nobody really has to do their job. And this has been going on for so long, I know at one point we had Judge Caruso, I think, come down here and sit with us and try and mediate it. I think the township lost out on this deal, but at this point, I just think it's in the best interest of the people behind us. We're ten years into a system that maybe is only designed to last 20 years or 25 years. So we've gotten maybe 50%, of the money we invested in it back for half the life cycle of less than stellar service, but it is what it is. That's the reason I voted to accept that, because, I mean, up until this point, I was all in favor of being deposed and going to court and trying to go for, I think we were in, we were shooting for about $480,000. But that just isn't gonna happen, ten years down the road, so that explains my vote.
Can I note for the vertical on mine?
Yes, just two tonight. The Fall Waste Collection Program is scheduled on your regular day of garbage. Pickup day includes on October 25th, November 8th, and December 6th. Dark waste must be placed in biodegradable paper bags. And also, Worth Huntington is committed to growing small businesses. We are pleased to announce our Small Business Development Series featuring four critical sessions to be held at Exella Square on Norman Avenue. The first session is November 15th, it's called Understanding Financial Statements, it's from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. And then in 2017, there'll be three additional components to the series. People compliance. The second is building and marketing plan, and finally, exporting essentials. If you're interested in small business development or starting a small business, please check our webpage, contact our office to get some additional information on the sessions. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor, did I?
Aye.
The vote? Aye. I'd have. And I can't say if you have to. But, as you call it, that's what we do.